All right, good morning. And welcome to our June 17 Board of Supervisors meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order, and I'm gonna ask Craig, would you say a prayer for us?
We're glad to. Let's hope we will work for it. Lord God, we are just grateful for your presence here with us and for the beauty of the day. Father, the privilege that it is to come together, to meet together, Lord, to conduct the business of the county. Father, we just acknowledge that we need your help. And, Father, we pray for wisdom and sermon to be given to these men. I pray, Father, that they will hear from you today that they'll make decisions that are in keeping with your will and in the best interest of all citizens of our county. And, Father, we would be remiss if we hadn't mentioned our first responders, our law enforcement, Lord, that do such an incredible job protecting us and keeping our communities safe. Thank you for them, Lord, and I pray for their protection in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Greg.
Yes, sir.
All right, under our public comments, is Kendra Wright? Thank you. Yes, ma'am, say your name and where you're from.
Good morning. My name is Kendra Wright. I'm from Brandon, but I'm a partnership specialist with the United States Census Bureau here in Mississippi. And this is my first time coming before the board. We have had representation, partnership specialist Kyra Robey has come in the past. I am new to the Mississippi team and will be here in Rankin County. So I wanted to, number one, introduce myself to you all, make myself available after the meeting for further information if anyone needs that, and also to raise the potential action and adoption, I guess, on the resolution supporting participation with our upcoming census. And so with that, I yield to any next process that I need to do.
I'm thankful that Ms. Wright was able to come. I got to meet her, what, a couple of weeks ago at CNPD and was impressed with her knowledge of the census and the conducting of the census. You may recall that at one of our prior meetings, I think it was at the June 3 meeting, we suggested that you guys be thinking about nominees for an important committee that will be brought together from citizens all over the county who will work to help us to publicize the fact that the census is going to be conducted in early 2020, and we want to be prepared as a county to take advantage of every opportunity that a complete and accurate census will afford our county. It's important to us as a county to get the numbers right and to make sure that everybody is counted. And so we feel strongly enough about that for two different things to happen. Number one, for you guys to be thoughtful about who it is that can serve on that committee. On the third, I mentioned that I wanted you guys to come up with a couple of names each that we can then bring forward and formally establish this committee. They have to be willing to work. And so y'all need to have those conversations. And we started on the third to give y'all an opportunity to do that. We may or may not be prepared to start talking about that today. We'll have an opportunity later in the meeting to do that. And then I want you guys to be really considerate about that and be prepared to as quickly as possible to establish that committee. They need to go ahead now, the committee does, and begin the work of organizing themselves as a committee and getting themselves prepared to then go out to various constituencies and publicize how the census works, when it's gonna be taking place, what to expect, all those kinds of things that help us to educate the public about the census. A lot of misunderstandings about it, about what it's about, what it's for, and we don't want anybody to get left out because they just simply were not aware of how this thing works. The second reason I'm glad that Ms. Wright is here is that it's important enough for us that what we would like to do, with your permission, is to have a standing agenda item during 2020 at our first monthly meeting for a report from this committee on the process of the census and the taking of the census and how that's being done and what sort of issues they may be encountering. We would like to have that standing item on the agenda. And so with your permission, Mr. President, we would like to suggest that beginning in January of 2020, we just have that standing report item available for the folks to be able to come forward and do that. So unless there is an objection to that, we're just gonna assume that we have permission to go ahead and make that a standing item. We may put it under my section. Does anybody have a problem with that?
Bob, are you okay with it?
I think I'll be good. Bob's gonna be on the committee.
I may be on the committee.
That's what I think, 'cause I'm gonna nominate you.
There you go.
Right. Yep, do y'all have any questions of Ms. Wright?
How long do you think the committee will be standing for us? So you can tell these, tell our folks how long they may be expected to be participating.
I'm gonna let Ms. Wright.
April 1st is gonna be Census Day of 2020, so I would say the first quarter of next year at least. It could go into July, so maybe the first six months. If the committee were to start this, like, July, then I would say for a year, so 12 months.
12 months, okay.
So I'm assuming they're gonna get paid to do this work?
I don't think so. I think this is volunteer, community volunteer work, Jay.
It can be a pretty short list.
I'm sure.
When I say that you need to be thoughtful about who can serve, you really do need to be thoughtful about who can serve. Somebody that feels strongly enough about our community and being counted and is will, has the time, obviously, and is willing to get out there. And I don't think that it's gonna be an overly taxing work effort. We're probably talking about, you know, couple, every couple of weeks, an organizational-type meeting, and then opportunities for each individual committee member to go out to constituencies and help to publicize things. So it's more behind-the-scenes work than anything else. Okay? Y'all have any other questions of us at this point? We'll just make it a point, and then in January, we'll have that report item under my section of the agenda. It'll just be there as a standing report item. We may not have anything to report necessarily, but it'll be there available for us if we need it. All right? The resolution that was referred to in that agenda item is attached, and so, Mr. President, with your permission, what I'd like to do is have the board actually adopt the resolution that's attached, and it's commending the census, that will give us an opportunity then to publicize that, that the board has taken the formal step of adopting a resolution, publicizing the census, and appropriating, as it were, the census in Rankin County. So if I can get a motion to approve that resolution, that'd be good.
I'd like to motion to approve the resolution.
Second. All right, Bob makes motion, Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, next, on our public comments, we have Cade Finsett. Cade is here with the Boy Scouts and has, we're gonna just acknowledge him, and Cade came to me asking about some issues that felt very strongly in a lot of different areas, flooding issues, especially on baseball fields at the Northwest Recre- what was it? Northwest Recreational?
It's Northwest Athletic Association.
Athletic Association.
Yeah, if they're on 471.
Those fields get wet at times. But anyhow, Cade is working on a merit badge, and I explained to him that there's lots of work that's already gone into it. We've already worked on a plan, not just for that baseball field, but all of Rankin County. And there's a lot of other steps. It's a very complex thing to work on. It's something that we started last year, and this is not just a one-year, a five-year, 10-year plan. This is something we've gotta do from now on. But we do have engineers, lawyers, lobbyists, people, all have to work together to change some things, change some rules, Corps of Engineers be involved, NRCS. There's a lot of moving parts, but we do have them in motion, and we thank you for coming. Is there something that you wanna add, Cade?
That's fine.
That's fine? Hey, Cade, for the record, say your name.
Uh, my name's Cade Finsett.
And you live at 116 Bridlewood Drive?
Yes, sir.
We won't put that on record, where it'll be there from now on.
What rank are you?
I'm Just Now Scout.
That's all right, good luck. Appreciate it.
Don't give up on that. I got my same citizenship merit badge myself, so don't give up on it.
Hey, don't listen to him. I have the Eagle Scout badge.
You see how he gets? I stopped at life, all right? So my, one of my biggest regrets is not finishing all the way through the Eagle Scout side of it, so I stopped on the Life Scout side of everything. So don't back off your passion for it. All right?
Thank you.
I have some questions about the baseball fields off of 471.
Sure.
And the flooding. Do you guys know what is being done, like, what they are doing to help?
Hannah, you're actually, that is Daniel, you live in Daniel's district, and that is his district.
Yeah, so I'll tell you a little bit about it. The Northwest Rankin Athletic Association is a private agency, so the fields out there are all private, which the law restricts us from spending county funds on private areas, such as that area. It's leased land, right, under Pearl River Valley, and it's just put in a low area. I played on those same fields. How old are you?
11.
11, all right, so when I was eight, I played on those same fields all the way up. They're about 14 years old, so they've been flooded since that same time because they sit in a really low spot. The problem is, because it's private, we can't put county funds on it. So the areas in which the county contributes to those things, obviously, we'll do some donations and things like that, we've done here in the past, but we also work on the roads and the ditches around the roadway areas. The law keeps us restricted to those roads, that we can't spend public dollars on private areas, if that makes sense.
That's right.
All right, so the best way to answer that question is, there's not a lot the county can do from a legal standpoint, right? The best answer would probably be to find another place to have the field and facility, right? Land is hard to find in the area, obviously, because it's growing and getting bigger and bigger. So there's not a lot of solutions that can happen for it because it's in such a low area. You know, the creeks that run right by it tie into Puyallaw Bay and into the reservoir, and they're gonna flood when we get rains. I've seen in areas where we've had kayaks and boats going around a baseball field, you know, it gets underwater, so I wish it wasn't that, I wish that wasn't the case, but that's just kind of the reality of where that location's at. It's been there forever, and I just don't know that there's a lot the county can do legally to help it. We'll continue to maintain the roadways and the ditches and the areas and stuff that are outside, and we can even move a little bit into that first parking lot right there. But that's as far as the law let us go to it. So the best answer, which I know is not a good answer, is we need to find another location to put that ball field in that complex. One, the location of it's rough now because it's grown so much, right? We've got so many kids that play in that area. So we've gotta find a different location, but the association's gotta find it. It's just not a county matter.
And I'd like to throw in too, you know, and it's unfortunate, but I guess it's the way it works sometimes. A lot of times where they choose to do these fields is where people, it's lowland because they, a lot of times donate that property because it's not good for building homes and things on. The park is one in Florence, the same way. At certain times, I mean, water's knee-deep, not for a long time, but it floods also. But it was donated because it was floodland, and I know some other property that's probably being looked at, that the owners that own that property, the investors, said it very likely would donate that at some point as a recreational property because it is also floodland. So a lot of times, that's the way you wind up with that type of property, to build ball fields on it, which is great for the community. My kids played on that same field too, so I'm with Daniel. It's been there longer than I've ever known, I guess. I don't remember not being there, but that's the way a lot of times that derives is from donated property because it's floodland that can't be used for something else. So, but anyway, he answered your question right on cue, but I just wanna throw in, that's why a lot of times you'll see athletic facilities in lower land, is because of that. So, anyway, keep doing what you're doing. I've been to a lot of Eagle Scout award programs, and I'm so impressed at the work ethic you put, you have to put in to get there, so keep going, boy.
Thank you, Cade. I didn't, if you weren't, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I'm done.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, next, we have a pretty long agenda, so I'm gonna move through it as quickly as I can. Next, we have old business.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the 30th and June 3rd.
Second. All right, Bob makes a motion to approve. Daniel seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our consent agenda, that we all had a chance to look over.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, Bob makes a motion. Jay seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Sullivan.
It may come up this time, John, you got two items, so.
You stretch your legs, anyway.
First item, petition to change the assessment of 2018 Riden personal pocket assessment rule.
Second.
All right, Bob makes a motion. Jared seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And item B, void the 2017 tax sale for PIN number 51005 and PIN number 19523. They should've been coded exempt.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, we've got the same. Bob makes a motion. Jared beat Jay to it. He seconded it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Well, any, well, it's unanimous, so I'm not even gonna ask the rest of it. Mr. Parker, come on up.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
First item I have on the agenda is the Old Magnolia subdivision in the Bucket Community, and we're recommending approval of those construction dollars.
I believe we tabled that last time we were here at my request. I've worked out the issues at hand, and I make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, Bob makes a motion to approve. Jared seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, Arbor Landing Phase 3A, we recommend approval of the final flat, letter of credit in the amount of $45,000.
I guess it's the same thing we, I think, tabled last time. I think we're putting off the same point, but you're good to go now, Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir.
Everything's in hand?
Yes, sir.
All right, so I'll make the motion to approve.
Aye.
All right, we have Daniel making a motion to approve. Bob seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item I have is Greenfield Crossing Part IV. We recommend approval of the final flat and a letter of credit in the amount of $69,823.35.
Motion to approve.
All right, Bob makes a motion to approve. Jay seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item I have is the Hollybush Road Improvements. We recommend approval of pay request number 11 in the amount of $149,119.72 to Southern Rock LLC and requesting authority to issue that check.
I have a question, Mr. Parker.
Yes, sir.
I don't think that's the final.
No, sir.
We still are holding some money.
Yes.
They're nearly finished, but there's a little cleanup.
That is correct.
Okay, I make a motion to approve. All right, we've got a motion by myself to approve, second by Jay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item I have is the Oak Grove Drainage Project. Recommend an approval of pay request number one in the amount of $374,292.92 to Himpfield Construction Company and requesting authority to issue that check.
Motion to counsel? Deny? Kick it to the curb? Just kidding. Second.
All right.
Let me ask one question on that, though. Is, what's their status as far as being done? You know?
That's what I was gonna ask. I think this last bid was like 900,000, so this is almost half, I'd say.
Keep in mind, that particular bid had a high mobilization number in it. That's one reason this invoice is as much as it is.
This is part of the mobilization?
Yes, sir. That's one reason this estimate is as high as it is.
So you're not far along, so.
I would still say we could probably have another 600,000, yeah.
All right. Because, you know, we, I guess the, kind of the irritating part on my side, more of a selfish thing, is we pulled Himpfield off the Spillway Road North Shore project to go to North Shore. So I do wanna remind Himpfield that we still are, got something working over here, not to forget about us, but.
Yes, we'll do that.
Elegantly done over the last six months, they forgot about us at North Shore and Spillway, so I'm a little irritated at Himpfield.
I got you. Understood.
They within their working time.
Right on the edge.
Yeah.
I mean, they delayed it, their last possible start date time was like May 10, so they go and put some stakes in the ground, so they go back to Oak Grove, they pull that back off. So they still haven't been back to put some temporary poles up for us.
I tell you, I don't think Himpfield's the one doing the work in Oak Grove, though. I think actually they got subbed out to another.
Well, that's the excuse they're making why they can't go to North Shore and spill it. They may not be, but I mean.
That's the problem when they got, they got a time, they can use it as long as they get done.
Sure.
Yeah, I've seen, seen them pull off.
I think, I think the main thing is, is what kinda irritates me on some of the stuff is, is that we.
Don't have control.
Well, we don't, and the problem is, we try to make it as transparent for as many people out there as we can on what's actually happening, so I wanna be sure we make it as transparent on how these construction companies treat the county at times. So that's kinda one of my issues.
Good point.
Yep.
All right, Jay made the motion, I think Bob seconded it.
Reluctant, maybe.
Right, yeah, after it, yeah. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The last item I have on the agenda is Andrew Chapel Road Bridge Replacement Project. We recommend approval of pay request number three in the amount of $54,206.52 and requesting authority to issue that check.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, I've made the motion. Jared seconded it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Yes, sir.
Come on forward, Mr. Slay with public hearings.
Looks like we're setting public hearings for June 27, 9:00 a.m. for five different hearings, A through E. If I could get them tomorrow.
Yeah, combine them.
Yes, sir, if I may.
I second it. Bob made a motion.
Yeah.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Bob to combine all A through E in one motion. Jared seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes to set these public hearings for June the 27th. Public hearings now.
Mr. President, item F is a public hearing on the Whitney Morehead, Brian May, and Ron Humphrey rezoning request, Highway 25. It's a District 4 property. Mr. Humphrey and his daughter, Whitney Morehead's son, Brian May, are seeking to rezone 40.30 acres of a 123-acre parcel that is located off of Highway 25. This property's currently zoned A2, so they are seeking to change the zoning to RE1, which will allow for the subdividing of this property. Property's been divided into four tracts. Mr. Humphrey will own two of the tracts. Each of them plans to build a home on the property. Property will be accessed by an easement from Highway 25, and Board Attorney will prepare a set of restrictive covenants that states that the lots may not be further subdivided. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition, in opposition to the Whitney Morehead, Brian May, and Ron Humphrey rezoning request. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? As President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close the public hearing. At this time, it would be appropriate to take action.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by myself, second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item G, Mr. President, is a public hearing on the Robert and Leanne Wall conditional use permit at 565 Seventh Day Road. It's a District 1 property. Robert and Leanne Wall are seeking a conditional use permit to replace their existing 2010-16 by 80 manufactured home with a 2019 32 by 86 manufactured home, and this will be at 565 Seventh Day Road. They own a two-acre parcel zoned RE1A. There's one other home on the property, it's occupied by Ms. Wall's parents. So at this time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Robert and Leanne Wall conditional use permit. Is anyone here to speak in opposition to that matter? As President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it would be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion to approve.
Aye.
All right, Jared makes a motion to approve. Jay seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item H is the public hearing for Robert and Karen Olds, conditional use permit at 1532 Shell Oil Road. This is District 3 property. Let's see, Olds, Olds, cut me out, Ms. At the bottom, there we go. Robert and Karen Olds are seeking a conditional use permit to operate an online auction company in an existing metal building at 1532 Shell Oil Road. They'll be open to the public one week a month for preview days and for pickup days. The parking area is a gravel parking area. This is a 6.53-acre parcel zoned A1. I'll open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Robert and Karen Olds conditional use permit. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? As President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it would be appropriate to take action.
My understanding, Renee, this building was built without a permit, and they came in after the fact, once the building was up and running, not running, but up, had four walls on it, and requested power, and that's when they came to us to see. And their use of the building at that time was going to be what?
Storage.
Storage. What's my options here, Mr. Slay? I got a lot of heartburn with this one. I mean, it just, you just, for those that can't remember this, this is a red metal building sitting out at the road in front of their home, you know? So my question being, if you're gonna be for storage, no one puts a storage building out in front of their home at the road.
Yes, sir.
So I think they had every intent to do this to begin with, which is no big deal one way or another. The fact is, they're just asking for forgiveness after they've already done the bad deed, and I got a lot of heartburn. It's one of my options.
Yes, sir. Well, you can simply deny the conditional use request. That's one option that you have. You can take no action at all, which is in the nature of a denial. You can, you can put a limitation or conditions on it that will allow for it to be operated, but whatever conditions you can think of, time, duration, contingent, hours of operation, the structure itself will have to meet certain requirements.
I'm assuming they're here?
Are you not here?
Anybody here? I make a motion, we do not take action, or we just don't do anything.
Okay.
They can't, they don't want a bad enough to be here to just step up and do it. And I'll give them the benefit of the doubt, don't deny it, but I'll give them the opportunity to show up next time. If they don't show up next time, it's dead.
Yes, so the motion would be to continue this matter until the next opportunity that you have to have a public hearing.
Just because they're going to come, then you're going to do it?
No, I'm going to talk to them. I want to hear their side before I make a decision, before I put any conditions on it, whatever the case may be. You know, I mean, I want to hear their side of the story before... If you want to throw something out there for discussion, I'm working with it.
If it's going to be a business, then it needs to operate like we make every other business operate.
Well, my question, I'm not too crazy about letting it operate, period, because you're right down the middle of residential area. I mean, granted, it is agriculturally zoned, you know. It just irritates me that they're in, they just went on the front end and did it without a permit or anything, and now, you know, they're asking for, you know, permission to go ahead and keep moving along. So, but your answer is right. They do have stipulation of time. I looked on the website. I think it's a couple of days during the week, during the month, I believe. I don't know how many auctions they have, but it's usually a couple of days to go view the goods, and then a day or two to pick it up. You know, I did see some, some big storage container things outside. I'll probably make them put that up, or at least build it. I mean, that's not crazy.
They do, and she knows that. They'll be working on that.
So it needs to be ADA compliant?
That's right.
Paid parking lot?
One space, one hard service handicap space, which they know all those things. And what she wants to do on the bathroom is bring like a small...
Porta-potty?
Formal building.
Get a porta-potty.
To have like the office and bathroom.
Formal building.
See, my problem with this is, it's going to be, it's going to be a continuation of it going on in perpetuity. Next time they're going to come up, it's going to be an auto repair shop. You know, next time it's going to be something else, and it's just going to get worse and worse and worse. But I won't be sitting here and have to listen to it. But I just, I, I'm really tempted just to deny it outright, you know, and but...
If you deny it outright, they have to remove it.
Sir.
They just can't have their business. They just couldn't have their business.
Just can't operate the business, they have to remove it. They're just, they're just stuck doing someplace else.
It would be storage. Exactly. It would be what they said to begin with, storage.
To me, the whole thing was, they knew what they were doing. They were in the online auction business. They did it about the same time. They created the company, looked at Secretary of State's office website, and then they went out and built it for the sole purpose of this. I'm thinking, well, that's why I'd like to hear their side of the story before I hammer on with it, because it just, if they'd have come to us on the front end, you know, and before they put the trailer out there and stuff like that and come and work with us, then probably would have worked something out, maybe, you know? But to go out there and then ask for forgiveness and, you know, and realize, they not even show up today for the meeting?
A big building. What does the neighbors think about having a red building in, by the road? What does the neighbors think about the red building?
Have you heard anything? You put a sign up? Nobody say anything?
I'm shocked.
Really?
How big a building is it?
Forty by forty, forty by fifty.
Good grief.
I mean, it's a red, red, low-up door. I first, first thought Shell Oil Station had to open up subsidiary out there, you know? Fire station opened up a little spot, but when I rode by the first time, I'm going to make a motion.
Oh, you're talking about right there before you get to Holyfield Road?
No, all right, no, it's on past Holyfield. After you get off Way Patrick, keep on going to the right, right there in the curve. Several lots have been developed there, you know.
Oh, you're coming down eighteen?
Yes.
You're coming my way, from my way.
From my way, before you get to Holyfield on the left-hand side.
Oh, yeah, that's been a good while.
Well, then this is last year.
Yeah.
I just happened to notice the online auction sign on it a couple of weeks ago. I make a motion, we table it. Mr. Slay, I'll give them the benefit of the doubt before one more meeting.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion to table it. We have a second. Daniel seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm really leaning towards just stopping it, but we have...
What do you want to do?
I want to kill it today.
Go ahead and...
I'll make the motion, we deny the request. I amend my motion, instead of tableing it, that we deny the request.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion by Bob to deny the request. Second by Jay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion is denied. Well...
The motion to deny has passed.
Motion to deny has passed.
So what will that mean? What will they do now?
They get to start over. They get to use it as storage. I'm assuming that they can get with Bob and have their discussion and explanation as to how it happened, and see if there's any way to work things out from this point.
I'm surprised you hadn't got a call, too, because I know some people that bought the other property. They live up in Richmond. I mean, maybe they just, well, I know they had to have been out there. I'm surprised.
I'm sure I can work out something with them, but my problem is now, it's just, it's there for perpetuity. It's just going to get worse, you know? You know, yeah, you know, I'm, I'm wide open. Anybody in the audience want to throw something in? Well, I am wide open here. Brad, you got any suggestions, any thoughts? It does, I mean, it does, I mean, it really does, you know? But I just, you know, if you can't, you let one go, then the next one come up before you know it. You know, before you know it, you got about, you know, just, you got to try to nip it in the bud.
You got to go through the necessary process. I'm surprised it got built before we knew, before, you know, y'all got wind of it.
They didn't get a permit, building permit?
Oh, they did get a permit?
No, they didn't. They didn't get a permit, they needed power. They built it, and then they needed power, and the power company sent them to us to say, hey, you need to get the building permit from the county, and that's when they, that's when they came up on our radar.
So they come back, do you have a permit?
I don't think so.
We have a process.
I can work with them on their feet, but I think we got a penalty thing for that, too, so...
We have a process to deal with late recognition of our process. We have a way to deal with that. There's a fine that's involved, and so, but that's, that's the repercussion that we have available, is to double up on our permit fees. That's sort of the fine process. They also, we also have an opportunity, as you know, the whole purpose for the permits is to make sure we get an opportunity to inspect as the structure's going up, that it meets our code. And so when we don't have an opportunity to do that, then there's some other issues that come into play. There's some expenses on the owner that can potentially come into play, like knocking holes in walls so we can see that certain things, in fact, were done. So it's, it's certainly in the best interest of those who are about to put a structure up and get with the county first.
I think it's a wood-framed structure with metal on it, wasn't it?
I have no idea. I haven't been in it. Dwayne, have you been in it?
I don't know why I'm thinking it was wood-framed.
Brian, we need to do the inspection.
Well, I guess, I'm sure when y'all make the phone call, or they make the phone call, go ahead and get with Janice to set up a schedule and to put them on a calendar to come visit, so see if we can work it out.
All right, let's move on to I.
Yes, sir. Number I is a public hearing on the Chris Holyfield Conditional Use Permit, eleven-ninety Old Vannan Road. This is District Two. Mr. Holyfield is seeking a conditional use permit to construct a climate-controlled mini-storage facility at eleven-ninety Old Vannan Road. He's proposing construction of a one-story eighty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five-square-foot building that contains five-hundred-and-fifty-one units. The building will have an all-brick facade. There will be no outside storage. This is a four-point-six-nine acre parcel zoned C-two. The property abuts the Regatta subdivision to the east. Mr. Holyfield wants to see if he can be approved for this use before obtaining detailed drawings. Again, this is District Two. I'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Chris Holyfield Conditional Use Permit. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. At this time, it would be appropriate to take action.
Yeah, just one thing on that. We've met with him several times and the people that are out there, and I think it's going to be a really nice structure for that area, so it's going to be good. So I'll make the motion to approve.
Is it all in house?
All enclosed, in-house. The structure's really nice. They've got multiple ones across the...
It's amazing, the last time somebody tried to put up one, the...
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, the problem with it was, it was all outside. It was all outside storage.
And this is all the brick, brick and glass, right?
This is all brick, indoor, closed, everything, air-conditioned, climate-controlled. It's nice, all indoor. So the problem last time was that everything was outside storage, and, I mean, that was the problem. This is indoors, and looks just like a normal office building.
Same people?
No, different people.
I'm really surprised you hadn't gotten burned up on this one. Like, people don't like...
The problem is, I get burned up on so many items, you got to get in line. So, I mean, I just hadn't, I hadn't got that deep down in the number system yet, so...
I'm surprised it didn't, everything else was clear about it.
All right.
It's just good, good leadership out there, you know? They just kind of trust their supervisor, and they say, hey, look, I think Daniel's got the plan. If he says it's a good idea, it's a good idea.
Apparently he does. Let's move on, Mr. President.
We have a motion.
I've heard enough of that, move on.
We have a motion by Daniel.
I can continue on if you want me to.
Second by Jay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
It's a joint effort with me and Bishop, right there on the same road. We only have, we only have a...
Don't even try to bring him in for any...
Look, we've got, we've got a four-lane road that separates our leadership abilities, right there.
That sounds like, I want to go down that road. All right, next, Mr. Slay.
Item J is the public hearing on the Latasha Wilson Conditional Use Permit, Ely Court. This is District One. Ms. Wilson is seeking a conditional use permit to place a twenty-eighteen fifteen-by-seventy-two manufactured home on Ely Court. This is a forty-acre parcel of family land. It's zoned RE-one-A. There are eight other homes on the property. At this time, we'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Latasha Wilson Conditional Use Permit request. Anyone here to speak in opposition on this? You'll come forward, please? Please state your name and address for the record.
Quinsel Lamar Hayes, two-fifty-nine Quitchens Row, Florence, Mississippi. I'm here to speak on behalf of the family. We don't have an opposition as far as her wanting to put a mobile home there, but we want to know the dwelling point where she plans to put it.
Where?
Where she plans to put it?
The dwelling point on the land, because there's two families that live on the land.
Renee would know.
So she wants to put it out behind her mother's home?
Put it out where?
So there's concern about the location?
Yes, sir.
You're here.
I know where her mother's home is located, so she has our blessings. And we just want to know before we start allowing too many things. There's been some things, this is Airland, and there's been some things going on on it, and we just don't want more.
Are you okay with it?
We're okay with it.
I appreciate you coming up and asking that and clearing the air, and I appreciate you. I really do appreciate that.
So this is, this is Ely Court?
Mm-hmm.
This is one-twenty-five. Her mother is at one-twenty-one, so she is directly behind her, is it nine, three-five?
No problem with that.
Okay, great. Glad you got this question. Thanks for coming forward. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in opposition on that matter? Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone else to speak in opposition on that matter. At this time, we'll close that public hearing. It would be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion to approve. I think that's all, that's all you've had, Renee.
I have, I have, well...
All right, we have a motion by Jared, second by Bob. Any other discussion?
We don't, like, in cases like this, when we have people locate multiple and one dwelling, do we not think anything about not the possibility of rental?
Yeah, that is, that is usually what we, I do. Is it any, this is not going to become a rental, is it? Or is it rental? I think they're here. You want to come?
We can simply amend the motion to make that a condition, that this, that this unit will not be rented out. It must be, it must be occupied by a family member.
You good with that? I know, but I'm just saying, in the event she moves, it's not going to turn into a rental property. That's what, that's what we don't want, okay?
But if she moved, it would be to the company.
Okay, all right. Okay, I amend that motion to, to say that.
You're good.
To use it as a home and not a rental for a family member.
Second.
For a rental.
Jared makes a motion, Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item K is a ratification of an action taken with the consent of the board on June third, and so this ratification will be non-pro-tung for June third. That's fancy Latin language for now for then. And so you are ratifying the authorization of the board president to execute an interlocal on behalf of Rankin County. Between Rankin County and the City of Pearl, this will provide for cooperation with the City of Pearl, allow the City of Pearl to access the county's bid pricing for asphalt during the summer months, and the, the interlocal requires nothing other than providing that access out of the county. The county will not incur any costs or fees associated with this interlocal.
I thought they, I thought they already had that, like the other cities.
No, sir. Under the bid pricing structure, the cities have to be included on the front end, and they have not been included on the front end as recipients of the county's bid price.
Other, other cities need to...
Correct. In the past, that has happened.
Yeah.
I don't believe in, in the recent future, Bridget.
They are included on our annual asphalt. I think he's talking about micro-surfacing and slurry, but no, they do, they are, and I have sent that to their purchase clerk.
Yeah, this would be for the micro.
They would have to make that, that regular asphalt a part of that bid, too.
Well, any, for, for, for any of the others, do they need to go ahead and contact you in the event they want to do that?
If you want me to start doing all the bids for all the cities, I guess so.
No, I'm just saying, no, I'm saying, can they, where they have the opportunity to get the same...
On asphalt, I do send it out to all the cities as their award, so they'll be able to accept it by their board, and they can use that. But this is just, he's talking about a separate bid.
They were not included in the, I call it the TL Wallace.
And this is one that I did have to get exemption from the PPRB for us to not to do the reverse auction.
All right, well, I'm just speaking for all the other cities. If they chose, like, to do this sometime, and assuming they would get it at our cost, do they, would they need to be notified? If that's not the case, they'd have to come to you first? I'm just trying to head off what makes it happen.
Not on the regular asphalt, not a regular term asphalt bids from the plant dig, surface overlay. This is a separate one.
I know, but if they decide to use, that's not saying if they, some of the other cities decided to use micro or whatever.
This is new territory for me, so I guess I've never let anybody do it.
At the moment, and with Bridget's clarification, the cities are included in part of our annual bid structure, our process. They are included for part of that. The part that Pearl is wanting to access, they were not included, the cities were not included in the county's annual bid process. So to get Pearl access to that portion...
Right.
You got to go through the interlocal. That's the only way to do it.
I'm all for it. I'm just looking ahead for when some of the others come up, make it possible.
So at the moment, we have not included the cities, what, beyond asphalt, Bridget, what else?
That's the only term bid that we let them utilize.
So asphalt, what else is included besides asphalt?
As far as turfing?
Yes, ma'am.
We have gravel, limestone, what else do we have? I can't even think of it. Trying to think of the ones we got for reverse. There's ten or just our normal road departments, stuff our culverts, plastic and metal.
Right. So the, the only thing that the cities are included in is the asphalt?
Yes.
That is it. Y'all get that? Everything else that is an annual, where we've actually had to go to the PPRB and ask for an exemption from the reverse bid, not reverse bid, yeah, reverse bid, to get access, the cities are not included. Pearl wants to utilize our pavement preservation program for a short period of time this summer, and that would be, I'm calling it the TL Wallace stuff, right? That was our, that was our bid award on that stuff. So it's the micro-surfacing, it's the slurry seal, and I'm really starting to get way out of my field on that.
The bear's behind you over there.
Okay.
Hey, hey, Jay. I can speak to it just a little bit, gentlemen. Not every city wants to use it.
Come on up here.
Okay.
I know that everyone done, but I'm saying, if, I was just looking ahead just so we'd know what to be able to tell other cities. That's all, let's just open the question up.
Yeah, no, I understand, and there's probably be other cities. We just thought that, we've seen you guys make good use out of it, and it's much more cost-efficient than asphalt on roads that qualify. So that's why we're requesting it this time. Other people don't particularly like it, but I think I've seen some of the things that Mike's been able to do with it on y'all's roads to extend, extend the length of miles throughout the county. So we just want to take advantage of that as well. But I, I do want to clarify something, too, on, on this, in the process, because TL Wallace is coming to the county first, and they're going to issue POs, and they're going to be handling, I believe, thirty miles of road here. One thing that I wanted to talk about was, make sure it was on there, was the leveling part, Mike. And you might be able to speak a little bit to this. We were talking about the pre-leveling and the contractor that comes in, be part of that as well on the bid outside of TL Wallace. We discussed that thing, Brandon said something about that to you, Craig?
You may have.
That is a separate bid.
Yeah. Reason I say that is, is because of time constraints. This gentleman knows exactly how to pre-level these roads and import us to TL Wallace. So it's just specific. And I don't want to, y'all know that you got one shot to level a road to make sure it looks right. And when this guy already knows, the fellow that y'all use already knows how to do it, then we're obviously going to get better, a better product. And I want to clarify, that will be after the county. We don't want to interfere in anything else. But while they're laying asphalt and putting down that, we want to be pre-leveling, which I think you guys are going to be through pre-leveling in mid-July, July 21st. I'm sorry, I'm the public works director right now for the City of Pearl. We're in search of one at the moment, so.
Let me, I want to make sure I understand how we handle the leveling part of this.
That's Luke Jay and Al Enterprise.
Okay.
Did they bid that?
Bid process? Is it in our CMA?
Yes.
Do we include that in the interlocal, do you know?
I thought we were supposed to.
Okay. Alright.
I mean, you talked about that.
I don't know if I got that.
I don't think I provided that to you.
That's what I.
I didn't know that either.
So thank you for raising that. We have a listing of the exhibits in our interlocal. So if I can make sure I get that particular bid package and that award, Bridget, we'll make sure that that's an exhibit to the interlocal.
Right, and again, just like you mentioned earlier, there's no cost to the county, so no taxpayer. It's going to be City of Pearl money that's putting down these roads. We just want to take advantage of access to the bids.
I'm good with, I just opened up some questions.
Alright, thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
So I'll make sure that we include everything. I'm really glad that Jake showed up, because I don't think that particular aspect of this would have been included otherwise. So we'll make sure that that gets put in there as an exhibit as well. So what I'm looking for is a ratification of the June 3 action and authority for the board president to execute the agreement.
Much approved.
Alright. We have a motion by Jay, second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Right, and I just want to be clear on the record. Pearl will issue purchase orders. Pearl will receive invoices and Pearl will pay for the work. So we'll make that absolutely clear. We're not going to be handling any of the paperwork aspect of the work product.
Right.
Okay. Mr. President, item L is a public hearing to receive public comments regarding the proposed issuance of a general obligation bond as indicated by the Board of Supervisors in its intent resolution that was adopted on May the 15th of 2019 and in accordance with the notice thereof as published in the Rankin County News on four consecutive weeks beginning May 22, 2019. At this time, I am opening a public hearing to receive any public comments regarding the proposed issuance of general obligation bonds. Anyone who wishes to speak on this matter can come forward at this time, please. Is there anyone to speak on the matter of the issuance of general obligation bonds as identified by the Board Supervisors in its intent resolution? Anyone?
Going once. Was, going twice. So over.
Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on the matter of the issuance of the, or the potential for the issuance of general obligation bonds by the Board Supervisors on behalf of the county. We will close that public hearing. The record will reflect that no one has spoken either for or against the matter. Item M, Mr. President, is a discussion of and potential action to adopt a resolution of the Board of Supervisors finding and determining that a resolution evidencing intent to either issue the general obligation bonds of the county or these other methods right here, that there has been no presentation of any evidence, of any discussion of any kind or character against the decision of the board to issue general obligation bonds. No statement of objection, no written or otherwise objection has been filed. There has been no appearance of any petition filed by qualified electors. And so we would be, you would be authorizing the issuance of bonds and/or entering into a loan in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $30 million to raise money for the purpose of, and then you see the purposes that are listed here. Okay, so that is the resolution that's before you. You are finding that there is no opposition, formal or otherwise, and you are electing to issue up to and not to exceed $30 million.
I make that motion.
Alright, we have a motion by Bob. We have a second.
Hold on, I have some discussion prior to this.
Well, I'll second the motion. Are there any discussions?
Yeah, well, I missed last week's meeting. I think there was some discussion about using additional funds. Whenever we last met, we were going to spend $25 million.
We came up with about $25 million in projects.
Right.
And there was no discussion, and then there was some additional discussion was had in the last two meetings about the reasoning maybe behind going on up to 30, since that's what we kind of support debt service wide plus that premium. I don't think we ever definitively said that was going to be the issuance amount.
Okay, so how much are y'all wanting, are y'all wanting to do the whole 30?
I'm looking at it, you know, one thing's already popped up on the radar is the potential demolition of the big building down on Marquette Road. And that's going to be anywhere from $750,000 to a million and a half if we get stuck with the bill. They're supposed to bring that to us, right, Tim? It and Jay is working on the, putting a hard cost number on that. So he's fleshing out the federal side to make sure that there's stuff like that to look at too. You know, I'm getting hit on East Brandon Parkway, a phase of it. They requested two and a half million, you know. So I don't, you know, I don't have the hard numbers there either, you know.
What?
East Brandon Parkway, that's from Highway 18 to Highway, what, the Interstate 20. Different, a phase of.
The south leg of, I call it the Grand Prairie Parkway. I think we're talking about something.
But yeah.
Yeah, so it's the south leg.
Those are some things that have come up. And I'm looking at the model drainage project between Terror Road and Richland Creek, district and 468. Tim gave me some startling numbers there, what it would cost to do that, you know. So, I mean, we're still working on hopefully figuring out how to make that more palatable. But I mean, answer your question, I'm not here to have the discussion on the projects, and we can do that if you want. I just think we need to take advantage of the opportunity we have when the market treats us like this.
Well, I just, you know, we always have opportunities, you know, there's always, even today, we got email, you know, from someone needing more space.
Right.
So that's, that's not ending, you know.
Judge Brown.
Yeah, so, I mean, our sheriff's department's already buzzing at the seams, so we have ample opportunities to spend money. Personally, I would rather just stay where we were, where we said we were originally. And I understand that there's some additional dollars that are going to be freed up because of the environmental. Based off 25 million, we get what is one?
Point eight.
The estimated premium on a $25 million issuance, the estimated premium is in the neighborhood of 1.3 million.
Three. And the 30 was like 2.8?
Two point, no, sir, more, closer to like 2.4.
Okay, okay, just a million dollar.
Yes, sir, that's the difference between those two issuances. And that's all we've talked about is a 25 versus a 30. We really haven't looked at any of the numbers in between, anything like that.
So if you did the, if you did the 25, and Steve, you may have to answer this question, Lynn's not here, but does that mean, I mean, it's still the same amount of debt service that's being allocated will be used to service a $25 million bond? It would just mature a little bit sooner than 15 years, or?
No, it's still mature at the same point.
So it's still mature at the same point. So what am I missing then, that between the 25 and the 30, if it's the same debt service and it's the same term, what am I missing?
The debt service on the 30 would just be a little bit larger.
Okay, so there would be a little bit less.
Still within your ability.
Within our building.
Okay, got you. So the 30, the 30 right now, based on what we have has projected, we'll cover the 30 on a 15-year pay. If we opt to go lower at 25, we're looking a little bit less debt service to allocate in the bond fund to pay for 25, but it's still a 15-year bond.
That's my understanding from Lynn's conversation.
Okay, that's correct.
And from the standpoint of deciding whether you do the 25 or 30, you don't have to make that decision today. Lynn's, last time I spoke to Lynn over the weekend, there are a lot of, maybe I should come up here. There are a lot of redemptions in the bond market between now and early September, which means interest rates should be lower between now and September. So his suggestion is that we be prepared to go into the market sometime between now and September. So the decision whether to make, to do 25 or 30 needs to be made, you know, in the next month or so. And to identify the specific projects at that point in time.
Well, it's my understanding, we originally voted, and some of us were at 20 million and others at 30, and it passed at 30. And that's why that's in here, is the 30, but.
We don't have to issue 30.
Right, I understand, we don't have to issue 30. We can do 25 or 20 or what. We can vote on the projects as somebody brings them to us, or one of us bring them to us. But if we do not pass this, do we need to go back and revisit that motion and the passing of the motion at 30 and put a different figure?
All you've done so far is you've adopted a resolution of intent and you told the public to be here today.
Right, on that amount.
Object to that or not. You've got to now, the next step for you guys is to say, we are going to issue bonds. And my concern is that if you say, we don't know if we are or not, we're going to get to restart this process.
Yeah, right.
That we will be able to meet a timeline in September.
Right.
I don't, I don't think we have to restart. I think it's just a discussion here, whether the 25, 30, one of that numbers going to be.
If you guys will pass the resolution that is before you now and you say it will not exceed $30 million, then the discussion can ensue, how much are we going to issue up to 30? All you're doing today is you're telling the public, you had an opportunity to object, nobody objected. Therefore, we are now resolving to issue bonds. And they won't exceed $30 million.
The next resolution you would adopt would have a specific number in it. So that's what we would need to.
Specific face amount, they would say we won't.
We would need to know, the next time we come before you, that it's 25 million, 30 million, whatever that exact amount is.
Probably find out how many more times Carl's going to come to the meeting and ask before we finalize. So. For that, you know, in deference to Jay, I'm willing to, you know, the 27th, we'll meet, what, the 27th coming up for the next meeting, next week? That we, you know, we try to finalize. I got the list that Mr. Slay sent out that had all the projects accumulated to write out 23 and a half. And then by next week, I will finalize other projects that have been presented to me. And we, maybe we sit down and try to finalize the project number. So here's your opportunity, if you see another opportunity out there you want to move on, this should be it. Even if it's one of your potential drainage projects that you two have asked for a study on, you know, that money, if the board decides to move on, that money's got to come somewhere, you know. And it shouldn't come out of, you know, operating funds if we're getting ready to flow the bond to do it, you know. So I'll amend my motion, Mr. President, at least to table the motion till the June 27th. Is that an appropriate way to do this or not, or what?
What I would strongly recommend that we do today.
Okay, that's fine, I'm happy.
I think we need to.
Is to act on this resolution that's before you. Today is the day we asked the public to be here. Today is the day that we indicated that a decision would be made up or down on issuing bonds. And I would like for the board to speak on that matter and vote up, yes, we are, down, no, we're not.
Okay, I'll make the motion down, amend my motion so that we're in favor of issuing bonds not to exceed $30 million on behalf of this road improvement project. Is that what you want?
On behalf of all of the projects that are listed in the intent resolution and in this current resolution, there is a structure of qualifying projects that goes beyond road.
True, I'm sorry, yes.
I have to issue because whenever we were discussing all this, I thought I made pretty clear that I would need a million dollars for my district. And that list does not have a million dollars.
See, now we already have the 24 and a half, you know, so, you know.
So I can't even vote for this if it's not.
Well, we're not voting for the list.
I'm not going to vote for intent to do it.
I thought it already said you had it, really, I just not saw the list.
We discussed it, and it was discussed that I was going to get a million, but it's not on that list.
I don't, I didn't, this first, I've seen the list.
You didn't check it.
He gave it to us.
Mr. Slay sent that out right after the first meeting we discussed all the list.
I didn't run mine off, I guess. No, I thought, I'm with you, Jay, you've got a million.
But if it's not on that list, I don't have a million.
We're not voting this list.
I don't think the list is finalized. And to Mr. Bob's point, I think what he's saying is, a final list needs to be in front of you guys on the 27th.
So do you, you know, you want your million or whatever it is for projects and stuff? And I'm serious about those two funding projects, you know, those two projects y'all mentioned, you wanted to get, you know, busting, they have to be some kind of study on. If you think that it's something you want to put together and try to do financially, now's the opportunity. But if we don't do it, I'm not going to be sitting here, if I'm still sitting here and Tom comes to vote for it, to say, well, let's take it out of cash, or road to bridge, or bridge. I mean, we have the opportunity to get it out of a debt structure, you know. But I've made my motion, Mr. President.
I'll second it. Jay, and I, as far as you, man, I'm certain, you're, I'm 100% there.
Well, it's not on the list.
Well, there's a lot of things on the list.
I'll make a motion, we add it to the list.
They add it to the list.
Thank you, Bob, thank you. That's all.
Yes.
Alright, making both add, make, yeah, I second.
Yeah.
Can I get a student person if I made all of this suggestion? Let's take Bob's motion separately. Bob made a motion to include a million dollar qualifying project for District 5. Can we take that motion separately and then that way we don't have to.
Do it first.
I'll make the motion, we add that to the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion to add to the agenda, discussion of Jay's interest in his district. Do you have any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes to put it on the agenda.
Do you vote for it, Jay?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay.
Bob makes, oh, I'm sorry.
So that, I make sure we get the record. What was added was to discuss additional, inclusion of additional. 24.
Big 24 and a half.
24.
24 and a half.
So we're 24 and a half.
I think it's different.
24, add your millions, 24 and a half. I need to, that's why I thought we were at 25 million.
I see it, so. Just to be extra careful, we're going to make sure, we got that, we're good.
Alright, now.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve Jay's project of approximately a million dollars. I have a second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Craig probably wants one too.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen. This should, much we appreciate.
Now I make the motion to have, we adopt the resolution to issue bonds for the said reasons and the said projects that are listed on the agenda not to exceed $30 million.
Alright, we have a motion. We have a second. Second, Bob makes a motion, Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
We'll be back.
All I would ask is, when you get your list complete, that we go over it with you to make sure that everything would qualify.
If we, if we have a list by the 27th for approval for the July 1 meeting, does that work on a good timetable for you?
Sure.
I mean, and we create this list for the, and I assume this list is going to be included in the documentation?
No, we would not want you to do that, because you may, as time progresses, you may want to change that list. So I would never want you to have a specific list.
And that scares me, but that's okay.
Yeah. I mean, you could have that in a separate motion, but I don't want it in your bond. But we'll be glad to sit down with you after your next meeting and go over that list to make sure that things qualify. And Bob, you mentioned drainage, drainage is not qualified.
If he wants to.
I think the kind of project that we're talking about here is road related.
If it's road related, it does, yes. If drainage is road related, it does qualify.
Yeah, yes.
That's a decision that will be discussed right then.
Okay.
Anything else, well, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ed, do you have other things that you're going to address the board with today?
No.
Okay, I want to make sure, because I know you've got to leave.
No, no, unless you have questions.
I think we're good.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Steve. First later.
Alright. Okay, guys, we're ready to move forward.
And I really insist, Monda, that we start calling this the Craig Slay slash Trey Jones heavy haul ordinance. I really, if this thing actually ever gets approved, they deserve all the credit in the world.
Trey don't want to have no part of this, what you mean?
Mr. President, this is an update on the discussions that were had with respect to the heavy, proposed heavy haul ordinance. You know, the board set a hearing or allow for public comment on the heavy haul ordinance that involved what we are referring to as the stakeholders. I heard out the most of home builders and representatives of home builders to the board president at the meeting, I believe, on May 6th. We met with those stakeholder representatives that the board asked to be in town on May the 10th. We met them for probably point two and three hours to discuss the proposal and allow them an opportunity to address their primary concerns. They had a number of concerns with language, which was that it appeared that most of the liabilities and the risk was going to be placed upon folks that have little control over the actual movement of the vehicles that are causing damage to the road. So they came up with a couple of suggested provisions to the proposal that are now under consideration. I'll share those with you at kind of a high level without getting into a lot of details.
Mr. Slay, your mic is not working. It was when you started talking, but it's not now. I don't know.
We didn't really want to hear that.
Well, I mean, I would rather, I would rather be on the record. There you go, now it's working.
Alright, and so, there we go, yeah, that does make it. The first item that they wanted us to at least consider, make an adjustment on, is the potential to actually issue licenses to the haulers themselves. Licenses that would be in the nature of authority on behalf of the county, issued by the county, authority on behalf of the county to conduct heavy hauling in the county. These would be annual licenses, and they would keep those licenses with them. The purpose of the license would be for a way to know who are the haulers, who has permission, and do we have a way to incentivize them to stay on specific haul routes, which is what I'll get to here momentarily. The license would be the effective way to control that.
I think your battery might be going down.
It's about give out. And so through the licensure process, you have a way to track and you have a way to incentivize or disincentivize. I was trying to really speak loud. To disincentivize them to be off of a haul route. To disincentivize them to be off of a haul route. Uh, if they have need to be off of a dedicated haul route, then they can receive permission through the road manager to be on a specific haul route that, uh, allows for that job to be completed. Okay, so you can control your haul routes through your licensure process. That make sense? That way, the folks that are, uh, your developers, uh, really as far as that goes is to make sure that whoever they're using for their hauling is licensed. Once you get that part of it, uh, you can, you can have better control there. At least that was the proposal that was given. All of this is under consideration. It doesn't mean that we're making a recommendation to you, giving you, uh, the, the discussion as it came to us. The second, uh, re- uh, recommendation that they made was that the county actually establish dedicated haul routes.
Uh, in, in this respect, well, as long as the activity remains on the county's stated dedicated haul route, you don't need additional permitting for that. If you're gonna stay on the dedicated haul routes, then you're, you're good. Uh, if you're gonna be off of, and this would primarily be state highways and state aid roadways. Okay, we've already discussed that, but if those would be haul routes, that would be own limits for hauling activity. When you leave the dedicated haul routes, that's where you've got to have permission. Okay, and if you don't stay on your permitted haul route, you lose your license. You lose your license and you're calling with no license, with an expired license, you've got repercussions that are associated with that. So this was, uh, this is more in keeping with the way that the city of Ridgeland operates. They have dedicated haul routes, they have licensure, and they have permitted haul routes uh, that are controlled that way. Uh, so that was an opportunity for us to have that discussion. Failure to stay on an, uh, on an accepted haul route uh, or, or on an alternative route that's established by the road manager results in a thousand dollar fine. This was their recommendation.
The committee's recommendation?
Sir?
The committee?
No, yes, sir, this was the home builder's recommendation.
Here's my only problem. This is, and I know you're not through yet, but this is more stringent than what we had. That, that's what beats all of everything. The, the, the plan we had before didn't issue fines. It didn't, it wasn't, this is worse than what they, what y'all voted down. What y'all, what y'all voted down was lighter on these people than what this is. So let me get this straight. The home builders come back and say, this Daniel's mindset of a haul ordinance or whatever is absolutely ludicrous. So he said, okay, he talks three people into saying Daniel's lost his mind. And then they come back and say, we wanna make this thing worse than what Daniel had it at.
I think it depends on.
I'm gonna sit back and relax for a second. Because it, it, isn't that funny? 'Cause we came back at the beginning of this thing and we originally looked at Ridgeland's deal. And then now these guys come back and say, we want it worse than what you had it. Okay, it, it kinda feels like, don't throw me in the briar patch mode, you know? Okay, I'll sit back. Go on.
I, I guess it depends on whose ox is being gored.
Beats all of everything.
We haven't, we haven't heard from the road guys yet.
Correct. Uh, and if you, if you pay attention to what's being suggested here, the licensure will be on the haulers. The fine would be on the haulers. And what you haven't heard in either of those is home builders. And so developer would not bear any responsibility for the haulers being off the road, off the correct road. Okay, so it's, it's whose ox is being gored. Uh, and so, uh, the, the thought process by making the haulers be permitted, I'm sorry, licensed, I need to be careful. And then permitting haul routes, that's markedly different than what we suggested. Okay, so anyway, that's the update. I'm just letting you know that those were the proposals that came to us. We are analyzing and looking at whether or not something that is more in keeping with the Richland methodology, uh, Ridgeland methodology would be appropriate for us to consider. Uh, and, and we wanna see if that's gonna be workable because we have significantly more roads in the county than the city of Ridgeland has inside its city limits. And so we need to make sure that we can, that can be workable.
So is anybody on that from the, uh, I guess the dirt haulers?
To my knowledge, no, Jared. Now, it could, there could have been someone there that I didn't, I, I didn't understand who they were with. Uh, but my recollection, my observation is that it was home builder association representatives.
Ken Martin was there.
Yeah, they, he's logger.
Well, he's log, log guy, he's not a dump truck guy. And he already plays by the rules anyway, right, Mike? I mean, he, Ken, Anthony.
Ken was, uh, he was pretty vocal about the responsibility of the haulers themselves. He was pretty vocal about that. Uh, and he, but he also took the position that the folks who are hiring them to do the work have some responsibility. He was vocal about that.
What did we decide about the commercial carriers, like Puckett and that bunch? If they're hauling, you know, big machinery to a side or whatever the case may be? Did we exempt them or talk to them or are they included in this thing?
Yeah, so the, the exemption that we had in place in the original proposal was your one-off. Uh, the individual who was constructing a house, that would be excluded from.
Like, for example, the guy that came in and says he can't do business because he does these pools, remember? Remember the guy that came up and spoke on that deal? He said, I can't go in and do custom pools because of the restrictions.
Yeah.
Well, what, if he would've just read what the ordinance said, he was exempt from it. But that wasn't a show he put on. The show was that I'm gonna go bankrupt, I can't be working in Rankin County. The problem is, he just didn't take the time to read the ordinance because he was exempt. But that's, I mean, that's the kinda stuff you're, you're dealing with, but.
I'll sit back, if you wanna go back to.
Sorry, sorry about that, I didn't mean to speak up.
Yeah, so there, there's no action to take on this, Mr. President. This is simply an update to let you guys know where we are. More to come, obviously. We, we needed to have the conversations with the home builders. They made a, a show of force for the discussion and we gave them an opportunity to include those who needed to speak on their behalf. And we have heard them and we are working through the recommendations that they made to determine whether or not that's something that seems like it could be a workable solution for us. We're not at the point now where we can come to you guys and say that we're, we're there.
We can't exempt the, the, I mean, road builders or dump, dirt, dump truck guys or dirt hauler. We can't just exempt them from, I'm saying from having any comment on this. We can't exclude them.
Correct.
I don't know how they, we missed that one.
Well, they didn't.
I mean, everybody was invited.
Correct. They didn't show up for the original meeting.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about on this panel.
Well, the panel was created that day from the group that was here.
That's correct. And, and we didn't have representatives from the haul, from the hauling community, if there is such a thing. We didn't have representatives here. Well, likely they weren't.
Probably were. It rained that day.
Yeah, it rained, yeah. It didn't rain that day, they were.
How would you, how would you say the, besides the eighties? Who on the sons of the?
I'm trying to think. Uh, that's pretty big.
Well, I think they would be a good representation for the group if, you know, we brought them up to speed, maybe of what's getting ready to hit, you know, and see if they, what their thoughts are.
I can think of two or three that might, we need to know about. Mike, you know some of them.
Like about one or two key people, but you think that could, we need to bring one out? I, I wouldn't think we need the whole community, but at least one or two.
Somebody's spokesperson for the, yeah.
Big group, that represents a big group of trucks that we're.
Craig, while they're doing that, the one thousand dollar fee or fine that they are suggesting, when somebody violates that, how do we go about collecting it? Because this is, this is an administrative process.
Yes, sir. It's, it's collected, it's collected by virtue of the fact that there's an issued license.
Right, all right, let's say they are operating without a license.
Yes, sir.
So if they don't have a license, you tell them, we're gonna pull your license. You don't give us a thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
They're gonna say, I pulled it when I come across county line. I don't, I don't have a license. So then where, where, where are we at?
Well, we're, you, you're basically, a, a number of violations just keep, keep getting tacked on top of each other. So your thousand dollars the next time becomes, it's a two thousand dollar hit.
But you, how do you, how do you tell them you're gonna pay? If they don't have a license, if they're not playing by the rules, and that's the ones we're looking at. I'm afraid that we're only gonna be dealing with the good guys to come in and get a license. The bad guys aren't gonna have one. And when you stop them and say, we're gonna pull your license, he's gonna go, yeah, I'll, I'll talk to you next week. They didn't have a license anyhow.
Yeah, so there's a structure in that fine process. I only gave you the high level part of that. There's a structure in there that gives a number of violations and eventually it ends up to where they can be stopped from all hauling activity in the county or they go to jail. So there will be a potential jail time for repeat offenders.
So it switches at some point from an administrative.
And I don't remember all the specific details of that, Steve, but that, that's the consideration that's there. We'll give you a few opportunities to get straight. Um, you, you get your whoopsie, you get your, uh-oh, now you're in trouble. Get your, you're headed to the who's gal.
Okay.
Thank you for that, Dave.
Okay. Any other questions about that? I do have need for an executive session, I'll tell you about that.
All right.
And we have personnel.
Before, before we move forward, Mr. President, before I forget this, our building department was awarded the best building department or community development park in the state on Friday.
Are you kidding me?
Right, right. Right. Got a smile on over.
How did you play off? So what was the award? What was the?
Uh, we received the award as the best building department for 2019 in the state building officials assessment.
So you competed against just the county building departments or cities?
No, statewide.
Cities too, cities and counties?
Everybody statewide, yeah.
Wow, wow.
Where's the, where's the press when we need them?
I doubt if he'd have got the word chucked. And Ms. Fortenberry being as kind as sweet as she is, she's gonna have something for us at the next meeting to celebrate this? You know, some cupcakes, cakes, stuff like that, punch, you know? You just happen to be the first person I looked at. Mr. President, let's move.
All right. Ms. Morton?
Good morning. Um, we have one item on the new Rankin County misdemeanor facility. We're requesting approval of pay application number seventeen to Flagstar Construction Company in the amount of two hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirteen cents and authority to issue that check. Flagstar did request an additional few days to be added to their contract, but J H and H did not recommend approval of those additional days.
Ah. So what does that mean, Carl? If you don't, you don't approve it, I mean, are they still within their contract date or they passed it?
No, they're still within their con, their approved contract. They, they asked for mud days, it's not really in the specifications and, and at this point, it's really not affecting their work, in our opinion. So they're, but they're, they're in good shape. They're supposed to, uh, finish next month. Now that, with the construction. The only thing that, that may go beyond that is, is beds.
Yep.
Thank you.
The only thing that may go beyond that is they're waiting on, if you remember, the, the beds were added to the contract and it won't take long to get them in, they're just, whenever they get here. It comes from a state contract, I think. But, uh, but they're, they're within their approved time on Mr. Meehan.
I make the motion to approve, Mr. President, without giving them or without awarding them the additional weather days as is stated in the, uh, motion or the.
All right. We have a motion by Bob to approve. I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Motion passes without the days. All right. Well, you're the next one on the list, so we'll just keep going.
Well, I'm specifically here to get permission to, uh, advertise a D H S re-roof, but I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Supervisor Morrow for bringing me into the bond issue discussion. I'm sure the newspaper guy would be there, but, uh, and I think, and I'm talking to Bridget, I think y'all may have already approved this months ago, but, uh, i- if you remember, there's two buildings that really need re-roofing. And then the first one is D H S. It's a very simple project, I say very simple. But we're ready to, uh, to get permission to advertise it. It's basically putting a coverboard over the existing roof and putting down a new T P O roof. Uh, it's approximately twenty-five thousand square feet, which is twenty-five squares. So our estimate on that is, is approximately a quarter million dollars to re-roof that. Uh, maybe less. It may be a little bit more if we find some deck that needs replacing, but that's, uh, it really is a fairly straightforward, simple project. Uh, and so it's, if the board so chooses, it's ready to advertise. The only thing that I do need to verify, uh, D E Q typically requires asbestos testing, but I believe that's only for projects that are older than nineteen ninety. I need to verify that. If that's the case, it would be two to three thousand dollars to get the roof tested for asbestos.
What was the second project, Carl?
Uh, the E, is it, it's the E O C building or, uh, yeah. And it's, it's unique.
Tell me about that. Well, our E O C director is unique.
Yeah, well, it's just got three different type, I mean, it's got different levels and things going on. It's got interior gutters and we're just trying to, it's not quite as simple. It can, it's gonna be done.
What's the timeframe on that, do you know? Like ballpark?
Uh, we can be through drawing it within the next thirty days, I think, uh, if y'all ready to, if y'all wanna go ahead with that one too. Uh, we need to meet with, uh, Mr. Johnson to review how that's gonna be done. We've met out there a couple of times and then, uh, just, what, we're looking at what's the most cost effective and then also long term.
And can you also include our E O C director when you meet out there for that?
Sure, sure.
Mike? He's the guy in the, just medium shirt back there in the back.
Yeah, it, it.
That's it, he's, he's going, he's going conservative today, he's wearing gray.
Well, it, it, I wouldn't call it an award-winning building, but it's put together. It's just, it looks like it's been built stages. Now, I, I don't know, but it. So every time they did, and this is, we get into these all the time. It's just, you know, try and get it done. It's, it's just more complicated to make sure that everything's corrected.
Gotcha. It just ma, it makes, it makes my, it makes my heart hurt when we got water coming through.
Are you, are you including that in your motion as well? The, the E O C building and the?
I would like to do, I'd like to do both, 'cause I don't wanna miss the E O C.
Yeah, that's fine, we're just not through with the drawings on that one and the specification, but yeah.
Is that what your motion reflects?
Yes.
That's what, that's what my motion's gonna reflect, is that we add to the, uh, add to the E O C building.
Let's, let's.
Do a joint one?
Amend, amend this motion to add the E O C or nine-one-one, whatever it's called, building.
Yeah, and, and I wanna put some emphasis, if I can, on the timeframe, just on the E O C building, just from the fact of that when we get those rainfalls and it looks like we're at a water park inside of there. I know last time it was just a maintenance issue that we wasn't cleaning the gutters out and stuff like that, but we still got some problems and it's a lot of money, so, please.
I'll, I'll, I'll get them to, to switch over to that and get that done quickly as possible.
Thank you, so that, that'll be my motion to approve both.
Second.
Just wondering, January seventh, I got authority to advertise this for the roof.
For E O C?
No, just human services.
Okay.
You already got that one?
Yes.
All right. Tell me the motion I need to make then, Mr. Slade, to get the E O C included.
It looks like it's just the E O C. Now, we have authority to do the advertising of the H S.
Yeah.
Why don't y'all go ahead and then give authority to advertise the E O C building as well?
Okay, that, that's, that's my motion then.
And I'll coordinate with Bridget to get that done.
Thanks.
All right. My understanding, we are not gonna take any action on, uh, one, which would be human service building. However, we have a motion by Daniel to add the roof at the building where the E O C operates out of, uh, for advertising.
Yeah.
All right, we have a second.
Second.
All right, Bob seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Uh, I, just to kinda give you a status update, I really wasn't planning to on, on the other two projects. Say, uh, as I said earlier, that Mr. Mainer, right now, is basically scheduled to get through in July. The courthouse is still lagging behind in September. However, we do, uh, we still have a, a bu, a budget, a surplus of about $200,000 on the bond issue. We did get a price back on the landscape. It was $10,000 less than what we had estimated, so we're gonna pick up $10,000 there. We're gonna get a credit on some asphalt, Mike, and, and, uh, the county engineers have been working with contractors on the Mr. Mainer facility, so we're gonna pick up some savings there. Uh, I still think we're gonna pick up some savings on the dirt work. I don't have those final numbers. I've been told that. So I, I, you know, I think we're in good shape. There are a couple other things, uh, uh, possible additions, and I will bring that to you probably at the next board meeting. I have a more detailed list on where we're at and all that, but, but we are moving forward. They're moving forward. When I say we, the contractors, on getting those things finished.
I saw them working on a Saturday. I think it was, wasn't this Saturday, it was the Saturday before, so, you know, shoot lock going up.
Yeah.
You know, so.
They're, uh, they've had several good weeks of, of weather, and that, that helps them get in the exterior, and then they've been working on the interior, so that, you know, we, we're comfortable with the effort being made, uh, for the most part. There's a couple of things we're still looking at. They're gonna want some time on the landscape, and I've gotta look at that, uh.
Did the landscape, now I can't remember, the landscape going through the G C or is it coming from us?
No, it's coming from the G C. We added it as a, as a, the quickest way to do that was as a change order. Uh, but we did get, they did get two or three prices on that. Same thing with the audio visual. They got prices in there taking, you know, they're using the low prices. We reviewed those, uh, so. Any other questions on anything or anybody, y'all, if y'all wanna go back through any of those facilities, let me know and we'll arrange that, uh.
I'm assuming on the landscaping side, that's gonna be kinda towards the end of the building.
It is, it is. And what, they, they've gotta get it. That's why. It's pretty much at the end. Now, the building, the interior of the building can be thick, and they can still do the landscaping, uh, where it won't affect the use of it. Uh, one, one other thing, the Chancery Innovation, we are, you know, about 30 days away from completing that. We, we need, we're gonna get a little more information from Renee's Department. We've met on that.
So that, that, you, at that point, we give drawings to contractors?
In about 30 days. And obviously, they've gotta finish the courthouse before they can really move out of there, so we're fine on that aspect of it. Uh, and we'll update the process on that shortly too. All right. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Hey, Mr. President, I think I added that. I think we need to vote to approve it. Is that right? Or do we do them both at the same time? I think we voted to add it, but I don't know if we voted to approve it.
I think you're right.
Okay, I bet. That's a good call.
All right.
Mr. President, we probably need to approve Daniel's motion to add the E O C roof.
We approved the add. We now need to approve the actual.
Correct. So I'll make that motion.
Advertising, yeah. All right. Our motion by Daniel to approve the advertisement, uh, of work on the E O C build, of the building the E O C is in and other people.
Yep.
I have a second by Jay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, Mike, word.
You've got four items here.
Good morning. How are y'all?
Fine.
The, the first item on this, uh, on this agenda is just simply you guys just acknowledging receipt of a request to do the fireworks display. It's usually over in the consent agenda, but we had some other things, so she threw it in here for the Ross Barnet Resub.
All right, do we have a motion?
Yeah, a motion approved.
Can't we say no until we get where we want?
You can, you can tell anybody no. Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, there you go.
All right.
Get some while there for a while and just cave right in.
You, you, you don't like fireworks?
Yeah, man. I don't get their attention. They'll fix something real if they, you know, if they find out we're gonna cut out the fireworks display.
That's right. Uh, with your, uh, with your permission.
Hang on, hang on, word.
Well, they tend to do that.
I'm trying to get a second, right?
All right, we got it. Jay seconded it. All right, we have a motion by Daniel to approve this item. Second by Jay. Any other discussion? Bob, there is a chance. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, if it pleases you, I'd like to skip number two and go to number three, and we'll come back to two at the end, if that's okay.
Okay.
Uh, item number three on this agenda is just you guys, um, what I'm doing is requesting a signature on our COOP plan, continuing operations plan. This has to be submitted to M E M A, and this is just a, uh, basically, it's a checkbox in our emergency management performance grant. It has to be turned in every single year, and, uh, we've got that prepared, and it's ready to go. And Ms. Janice has the, uh, signature page. Uh, Mr. Gaines, for your signature on that is what that is.
All right, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make it.
All right, I, I think Daniel made the motion.
Second.
I'm gonna go with Jared second. Any other, uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number four, we're just simply requesting authority to apply for a grant through the Mississippi Office of Homeland Security. Uh, they sent a really, really small, brief letter out last week, uh, that they had some funds available. They didn't, they didn't mention what type of funds, what type of grants this, this entailed. Uh, I'm not sure if there's any matching funds or anything like that. Historically, it is not with Mississippi Office of Homeland Security. So we just simply want to, uh, request authority to enter into this grant.
My bad.
Proposal, if we can get it.
All right, we have a motion by Bob. That was second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now back to two.
All right, item number two, this is the, uh, this is the one as rare as it has again. So what this is, we've got three more hops or links left on our radio system, uh, that need to be updated. These microwave links are over 16 years old. Um, they're on their third radio system, and when we put the new system in, microwaves were not included in the cost of the new system. We have since replaced, I believe, the other three are all new systems. Uh, new microwave radios, you cannot buy parts for them anymore. You cannot get any service on them. When they're gone, they're gone. The issue with that is, is when it's down, this is about a two and a half or three month process. These microwave radios have to be built, all the engineering done, and then the install really doesn't take more than about a day and a half, but you've got two or three months of lead time to get your system back up operating correctly. The reason that it's important for us, I believe, to go ahead and get the other three hops at one time, um, is kind of a, a two-fold deal. Number one for me, is it working today? Yes. The resiliency of the system is not there. I've got Carl Art here with Motorola. He was an engineer with Motorola, can explain to you the nuances behind that. Um, if we have any of those three that goes down, our radio system's gonna go into local or site trunking, uh, which is greatly reducing our coverage area. I've talked to Mr. Slade about this. This is applicable, uh, to the bond, should you so choose to do that. I'm not saying that that's the place to put it. Uh, we've got a three-year lease purchase program, if you will, with Motorola. Carl's been working for about the last two months on getting this quote together for us. And that's gonna be, uh, I would assume probably Ms. Wanda and some of her staff to sit down and see if you decided to go forward with this, what is the most economical way to do this? Is it better to go with Motorola's financial plan, or is it better to go into, uh, a bond, or how do, how do you guys wanna do that? So that's totally up to you.
Mike, how come we didn't include this before?
That's so easy. Mr. Carl Art can answer that question for you. Come on up here, Carl, if you would. This was well before my time, so I honestly don't know. I wish it would have been. And the other big thing is too, we're about to have to renegotiate. We're, we're about to have to renegotiate our maintenance agreement with Motorola. I would like to put our microwave systems in to the, uh, maintenance agreement, which they have never been, uh, and they are not now, uh, so.
All right, Carl, why, why would we not include these again with?
Uh, so is, is the question in the initial, like, the, the big purchase of the whole radio system?
The $15 million we spent?
Right. So, um, if the decision was made, you know, I think similar to the reason you didn't replace shelters, generators, things like that, some things just were there and worked, right, and the, the decision was made that, you know, if, if things were working and they would, they would operate on the new system, you know, we don't, we don't need to buy them right now. And then, you know, so that, that, that microwave system has continued to serve in the, you know, intervening four years or whatever it is. So I, I'm not sure the exact reason, but that was generally the reason. It worked as it was and, and continues to now.
Sounds like it's a pretty important piece to our operation.
Sure.
I don't know why it would. It's just not, it's different than a generator or a, a shell somewhere.
Uh, you're right, it is, absolutely. So that it is, you know, technically, it's separate from the radio system, right? It's how you connect all your sites together. So I, I, again, I, I wasn't there when that decision was made, but I suspect it was just, the decision was simply, we can save half a million dollars by not doing this now. We bought a good system to begin with, and it continues to work, and it will work on the new system, so, uh, it was left out. That, that's my assumption.
So how long has it been in place now?
16 years from what I, from what I'm being told.
What's the lifespan, next one that was on?
Uh, yeah, so that, so I, when, when the original one was sold, I don't think anybody would have said, hey, you're gonna have this thing for the next 16 years. It's nice that it lasted that long, and that shows you the quality of equipment, and this is the same manufacturer, it's just their updated equipment. Um, there's no reason to think it wouldn't last just as long as that one did if you continue to keep it up. And again, half of your system is already this new stuff, right? So three of the links are already at this level.
Yeah. I, I just, I don't understand why we did that start with. So if we did the others, why not go ahead and do these?
Sure. It, it's not uncommon, I'll say that. It's, it's not uncommon for folks to do that, to, to, to carry a microwave system over to multiple radio systems.
All right, so we're, once we get this put in place, we gotta be turnkey good to go at that point, right? All of our, all our microwaves should be updated, current systems, all the way through it. Um, anything else you think coming up, down the line that we're not doing?
We've, uh, I know you guys have entered into some discussions prior to about generator replacements and things of this nature. Uh, we've got our generator guy that just finished up last week doing an absolute 100% total service load test, the whole nine yards on every single generator that we have. I'm getting good reports back for him. I'm waiting on his final report to come back. Um, at this point, we do not, would have been nice to have new generators yet, but he told me, he said, Mike, you, I'm just telling you, you don't really need it. Um, he said, basically, if you, if you take this motor, it's a car motor. He said, you go drive it 50 miles an hour down the road, he said, these generators got about 20,000 miles on them. He said, that's how they equate, uh, age and mileage and things like that, and that's just based off of the hours of the, of the generator. So I'm, I'm, I'm fairly confident now that our generators are in good shape. We did actually have five of them that went down. Three of them for a long period of time, about five days. And, um, again, all we could do is check to see that they're out there running. We have no way to determine whether or not they're producing electricity. Um, as soon as we get this bill in, then I'm going down to have monitors put on, uh, put on all of those, so we'll actually have some documentation, and, and we know for a fact that these things are working and they're producing electricity.
All right, so, so time, timetable, we get this approved?
Okay. Last year, if you'll remember, um, I, I keep about $90,000 in my budget in the 911. Last year, we spent that money to buy one of the hops. Um, so that's a reoccurring thing in the budget that I, I have put in for the la, that's been in there for the last several years. If we sign the contract today, and Carl, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, if you, if we enter into an agreement today, the first payment is not due for 12 months from today, and then it's a three-year deal, but they will go ahead and build them all and install them all at one time. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that we'll be able to have those in or negotiated inside the maintenance agreement.
So the question you've got is, do you want to put the money in the bond, or do you wanna just pay it out straight, right? Finance through Motorola?
Do you want me to continue to buy one a year, like I have been?
Yeah.
I can buy one a year. We, we can, we can do nothing. Was option one. Option two, I continue to buy one a year.
Right.
But I won't be complete in time to put it in the maintenance agreement, or we can go with Motorola's proposal on their financial agreements.
Get all three.
Get all three at the same time, pay for it through Motorola's way, and that's what I'm saying, Ms. Wanda and her staff, many look at it. May be, it may make more sense financially to go with Motorola. It may make more sense to put it in the bond. What's in the bond and do however long the terms of the bond, or I'm not sure. I don't think it'd be a difference going 15 years versus three.
You needed to put some monitoring stuff at some of these locations. What kind of money is that?
We're probably gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of $1,800 per generator.
But you're budgeted for that, right?
I've got it.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, it's, uh, no, it's, everything I got, this, yeah, I'm not coming to you asking for money.
Okay.
At all. And the, the $90,000 that we're putting in the budget every year, take that, pay the note. Uh, my thing is, I'd like to get them all at one time so I can put them in the maintenance agreement.
Will the maintenance agreement, go back and cover those that we already have, that we got from you?
Absolutely.
Or just be these three?
No, it'll cover everything. The problem now is that ours are so old, you can't get parts for them, you can't repair them. So it was cost prohibitive to allow Motorola to put it in the, in the maintenance agreement. It was gonna cost us so much money. Because they, the only way they can charge us for it is off the front end, charge us for a brand-new system, because that's exactly what they're gonna have to do if they put one in. And speaking of the maintenance agreement, just so you know, we just got a rebate back, um, if you wanna call it a rebate, for just around, right at $15,000 based off of last year's maintenance agreement. Um, you remember, I came to you and said there are some things that we were able to identify on the last P M that were not actually being monitored, that were supposed to be monitored, and, uh, after some long discussions with, uh, with Motorola, um, they have refunded us back $15,000 on that maintenance agreement, so.
It's good work on that. So the question is, how you, how you want to spend?
I like the idea. He's got $90,000 in his budget each year, and let us approve it, and he structure his payment of that $90,000 three, I mean, actually, it's only gonna be 80. It's gonna go down some. Use the same money you've been planning to replace them with to pay your bill.
Right. The, the thing is, is I get all three of them now, so I can put it in the maintenance agreement, as opposed to spending three years to get them all done, so.
But they'll, I think, the way it was sounding, Motorola has a wonderful buy now and pay me later deal.
Absolutely.
That you can stretch this out over three payments.
Well, I think we're all gonna be in favor of doing that. Why don't we just decide and see, let the financial folks figure it out?
Yep, yep. I agree. But we are, I mean, it looks to me like that it's gonna wash, uh.
So Slade, I need to make a motion to approve all three together and then just figure out the financing on the right side?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that'll be my motion to approve the 240, all three together, and then work out the logistics. Side on whether or not we wanna pay it that way, or finance it through Motorola, whatever you wanna do.
Yep. All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Sure.
Daniel makes a motion. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Carl, do you know if there is any penalty or prohibition, if we enter into the lease agreement, would there be any prohibition on our paying out the lease early?
No, no, sir.
Okay. All right, that's the only thing that I was concerned about. So I think you guys are fine either way. My thought would be, enter into the lease, and if you guys decide to fund this thing with the bond issue, pay it off.
All right, do we have a need for executive session?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we have an, an item under executive session that'll qualify under section 254174J, and also personnel.
Oh, you keep us in suspense. What is that?
Caleb?
4J. Sounds like it's the 4J, didn't it?
I, I saw Caleb back there, and I didn't even think. Uh, Kim, Mr. President, this is, uh, this is gonna be on our right-of-way acquisition. Caleb, uh, is it on Andrew Chapel?
On a road.
On a road, okay.
Is that for executive session, or is that?
No, sir. No, sir, this is, this, come on.
No, he does.
No, sir. Come on.
Sure. I'm not sure this doesn't need to be in there.
But is, are we acquiring land? Is this what?
We're talking about land on the county.
Okay, yeah, never mind. It, it is executive.
That's what I thought.
I make that motion to go discuss the need for executive discussion.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Bob going executive. Second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor?
I make a motion to go up for the need for 4J and personnel reasons.
Write that down.
Second.